Came here in 1986 to run it for myself in October. I signed the papers when I was owner of the Red Barn Incorporated. People come in here for the experience, more so than I think anything else. And they love the fact that somebody's actually taking the time to listen. Find that balance between doing what you love, that isn't really work, that might pay the bills, and, more importantly, can resonate with people and actually to some extent, help people. That's pretty rewarding. Without my customers, I would be doing what I don't love, guaranteed.
Call the meeting to order. We'll begin with a public hearing on two ordinances. Ordinance number 14, 2017, providing for amendment to the Winslow zoning map to rezone the entire lot owned by Gloria Veyou, tax map 16, Lot 34, 55 China Road, from the high-density residential district to the mixed-use district. Is there anybody wishing to come up to the podium and state their name and comment on ordinance number 14, 2017? Go ahead.
Chris Veyou, Gloria's son. I was under the impression that we were including the two abutting lots in this. And I've had concern from both parties as to why they're not included. Alicia Levine is 65, China Road. And I spoke with Nancy Adams today, who is the abutting neighbor on the Cushman roadside. When we first met with the planning board, it was talked about, well, why don't we do all three properties? And that I would speak with them and get them to sign and agree to it, and then we'd move forward. But for some reason, that never happened. And here we are, the third round, and it's still just the one property. So, kind of confused.
If I remember correctly, in the last meeting about this, we decided to go forward with the Veyou property. And if the other two wanted to join in, then they'd have to go through the same process.
And we put it back to the planning board, right?
Certainly, they should go to the planning board first.
But it already did it.
And the planning board would make the recommendation.
Which we did the very first time.
The very first time.
Hence, I went and got the signature, because we talked about it. And they said, if they're in agreeance, it makes sense. I need to bring that up at first. Planning board said it would make sense to do the abutting properties. We had the zoning map out. But yet, that never happened. And they're obviously in agreeance. And I know Nancy Adams spoke with Mr. Bradstreet today about it as well. Because she was wondering why she wasn't on the letter as well.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Gary Owen is here from the planning board, and he wants to comment. The only comment that I would have, when it came to the planning board, the original application was the one that we acted upon. And it has not gone through the proper process to go through for the other two, the two abutters. In addition to that, those two abutters and your property combined into three would impact the back row, which is...
Belanger.
Belanger.
Belanger. And those folks haven't been notified, and they have come to the...
I thought those letters were being sent out.
The process is that you have to apply to do that. And if you recall, I made it clear at the planning board that if you want to do this, you need to apply. And as a result, it didn't happen that way. It came to the council last month, and it was processed as it was originally done.
So, no abutters of our property, the 55 China Road, were notified up until today? Nobody was?
I can't answer that, I don't know. But I will tell you this, the way that it came down through the council, last meeting, last council meeting, was as Mr. West just said. It went through, and it was based upon the single lot, which is yours.
Okay, and then, as you were saying, Belanger Street residents should have been notified? Because we do abut that lot.
Yes, but in order for them to be, for everybody, all the abutters, to be done, they have to have requested it.
But what I'm saying, I'm just talking about this property. Was that done for this property? Because we did apply, and we're here. So, was any letter sent out to the abutting?
That's what we're here for tonight.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, if I may.
Go ahead.
Yeah, the codes office sent out letters to your mother's property.
Okay, that's what I was...
Not anybody else's.
Okay. So, what's the process, then? Seems just extremely inefficient. What's the process for these other two residents?
Same thing, I assume they would approach the planning board.
So essentially, you have to have six meetings over the same corner.
Mr. Chairman, if I may.
Go ahead.
If, at the very beginning, if you all came in together at the same time, the process might look a little different. But where only your mom came in for her property, and the others weren't represented, that resulted in it being just one property?
Well, I understand that. At the planning board meeting, we did discuss getting signatures from these folks and me physically going and speaking with them. And then, when we moved on to the last meeting, city council meeting, those letters didn't seem, nobody seemed to care about them. But that's the process that initially I was told to follow. Nobody said at the planning board meeting, you need to have them come in. Because I would have had that done between the planning board meeting and the last meeting. Not to waste anybody's time, but it just seems a little...
Well, this is deliberate for a purpose. We don't change zones on a whim.
No, I understand that.
There's a process, and neighbors have to be notified. And it's, it may seem that's convoluted to you guys, but to a neighbor that doesn't want to change, it's not. They want that, they want that opportunity to...
Oh, I understand that.
And that's why we do this in a deliberate fashion. The only thing, the only time we do it is if there was a sale pending, and it was imperative that it got changed, because the new owner wanted it. We expedited the process for reasons like that. But generally, we're going to take this slow. And even if one of us wanted to change something in the zone, we would go to the planning board first, and the planning board would make that recommendation back to the council.
And I understand that. I just think it probably should have been a little clearer that they had to physically come in, because now we're here, and it's kind of pointless, really. Because...
Seems to have done some communication issues, yeah, there's no question.
Because I would have never needed to get signatures from them and explain to them what was going on. I was under the impression that would happen. All the letters were going to be sent out to the abutters of all three properties, and then we'd wind up where we are right now.
I think the planning board, the short answer is the planning board acted upon the one request. They received one request, and they acted upon that. That's the short answer, I guess, right?
So, where do we go from here, then, if these folks want to?
Would you like to speak?
Yes. There's a number of issues. Public hearing is basically what you're doing right now. One of the things is, we could table this, and everybody could file a request for the change. The other one would be to just do yours and notify all the abutting property owners.
Well, I'd imagine we just do it all at once.
Belanger Street wasn't notified at all?
No, just the abutters to your property.
Which essentially would be their abutters, because we all share the same property lot.
One on each side would be...
So essentially, they're going to get two more letters once they reach.
So, the people that are behind us don't get notified? Just next to us, on either side?
If you make a request to have your parcel rezoned, then any property that abuts your property will be notified.
Will be notified.
Abuts by how many feet?
Just any abutting property.
Abutting property owner will be notified of a proposed change.
Yeah. Well, essentially, it'd only be one more home, really. Because everyone else has been notified already.
So, does Nancy Adams have to be at the next meeting in order to be represented correctly? To have her property changed over? Because she's not here, but Adam is here.
Yeah, she has a heart, she doesn't, she called me today and says she doesn't drive at night.
Right, which is why she wrote, she signed off on it, thinking that's true. So, that's why I'm asking. Does she have to be?
No, she wouldn't have to be here. She could send a representative, for sure.
Okay, so essentially, we just need Nancy Adams and Alicia to file...
To go to the planning board and make the same request your mom did.
Okay.
And then, we'll go through the same process.
Wonderful.
Unless you have to expedite it because of a sale coming up or some extenuating circumstances. Otherwise, we're going to take it one step at a time.
Weren't they doing that? Aren't you selling your house? Is that, is that...
I want to.
Right, and that's why this whole thing is happening.
Well, this is the second reading.
Right.
So, after tonight, that, hers, her lot will be changed. The zoning on her lot will be changed after tonight, tomorrow morning. It will be a different zone. Is that accurate?
Yeah. Yeah, I guess, no, I just feel foolish, because I spoke to these people, and we're all in agreeance, and we, and now it's...
There's just a communication gap that should, they should have gone to the planning board, too.
I understand that.
And make the same formal request.
This is now, two and a half hours into a communication issue here.
Yeah, yeah.
All right.
Apologize for that.
Any other comments? We all sat, nobody else? Okay. The next ordinance for a public hearing is ordinance 15, 2017, providing for amendment to Chapter 14, Article 6, 1461D of the Winslow Town Code titled "General Site and Use Standards" by deleting the strike-through language in the attached section. Would anybody like to speak on ordinance 15, 2017? If not, we'll move on to the regular council meeting and begin with a roll call.
Ray Karen, Ken Fletcher, Jerry Kurian, Steve Russell, Ben Twitchell, Jeff West, Patricia West?
And then, the budget begins.
By the way, the citizens of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, omnipotent, and justice for all.
Oh, entertain the motion to approve the minutes from December 11. Moved, is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Do we want to do the January 2 meeting, too? Do we have to do minutes for that? Approve minutes for that?
It wasn't intact.
Wasn't intact, we'll do that next time, okay. So, it's been moved and seconded to approve the minutes from December 11. Any discussion, omissions, corrections? If not, all in favor, please raise your right hand. Oppose, same sign. We have communications, we have a legislative report. Knocking in here. Public comment period. If anybody would like to step up to the mic and speak on any subject that they wish, now is the time. All set, we'll move on. To reports from committees and commissions, we'll begin with the town manager's report.
Mr. Chairman, if I may. In my report, I list some proposed budget workshop dates in March. Do you want to know if any of those dates are in conflict with...
I can't make the fifth. But I don't, I don't read your dates just because of me.
Our meeting will be on the 12th, right? Our regularly scheduled council meeting? I guess everybody's all set.
You know, the only comment I'd make, I see that we have education on the 28th. If I remember correctly, the 95 days from the end of the fiscal year would be something like the 28th and 29th. I'm just concerned that that is too late in the process, that if we have to have any discussions or other considerations, then we just won't have the time.
We should probably move that one up, then.
Right, you know, I would think. And I understand that there's more than likely going to be an election around the...
13th?
13th for the AOS, whether that's going to continue. And I understand that if that is not going to continue, there will need to be a new administrative budget put together. So, I was wondering if it'd be reasonable in that first, either the week of the 5th or the week of that 13th, to actually have a discussion with the education folks.
Regular budget workshop?
Yeah, you know, because we, because we had proposed some questions, which we had, I think, sent out.
Yes.
And so, even though it won't be the final number, at least it would allow us to have that discussion, because I think that's always been a challenge.
So, you want me to move them up to the 13th?
Yeah, you know, I would think that would be a good point.
So, are you with everybody? I don't think so.
Or the 6th, even? Yeah. If you were doing it before the election for the AOS, then that gives time. So, if that's, if it's disbanded, then they're going to have to redo...
It's a different budget.
Different budget. So, we do it on the 13th, that's when the election is, then I don't think that's enough time. So, if we could move it to the 6th, because Patricia won't be here on the 5th, so 6th would be a good time. Yeah, I think that would be...
That might be a good idea, yeah.
Put the library and project down where education...
Yeah, I think that makes sense. Any other concerns on that schedule?
If I may.
Go ahead.
If they're going to be March 6th, then, you know, they have to have it ready to a certain point. It can't be just command, generalities, and then what are we going to do? Because, you know, we're not going to have the details. We're not going to know. If, they need to understand that we need to go into some detail with what the budget will be. And so, I'm concerned moving it up to that far. We're talking about now, a couple, you know, seven weeks, eight weeks, whether they're going to have enough time for the detailed portion of the budget. But they've got plenty of time, I think. But I think we need to communicate them, the need to have this and the need to have the in-depth discussion that we need to have.
It wouldn't bother me, question the others on the council, to have two meetings with the school board.
We did that.
It is two-thirds of our budget, and it's an important aspect that we have to go through with that. If we have to have a preliminary one and go through preliminary figures, and then they get some finalized, and we have another one later on, it might be...
If I remember right, didn't Eric say that they're going to have to do two budgets this year regardless?
Yes.
Depending on...
The AOS vote, I believe.
The AOS vote.
As long as before the 28th, you know, the 28th, they have, we have to have, be able to approve the school budget on the 28th, to be able to reach that deadline that we have.
Right. All I'm asking is, through the chair, that the town manager communicate to the education department of the need this year of a detailed budget way ahead of schedule that we can go over and take a look at.
And just for clarification, if I may, just for clarification. The charter indicates that they have to by the 28th.
Yep.
We have to have their budget by then, that's the latest.
But we have to have something before that. Because that first year I was on the board, they come up the day, about two days before we had to vote for it. You know, it didn't give us any time to even look at it. And the last year, they were late.
Right.
The other thing we can do is, if you want to, we can compact this schedule a little bit. There are some things we could combine. For instance, organizational support doesn't have to have the night all by itself, does it? We could combine that with others, like the town council and the administration. That could be, you know, I like the department heads being here individually, but we could combine some of the others. And then, we have a capital improvement meeting. If we're having just the department heads here, can we go over their capital improvement part of their budget while they're here?
Yes.
And so, maybe, I'm not sure we need another night just for capital improvements? Or maybe there's going to be others besides what the department heads come up with? I don't know, but we could consolidate some of these, I think.
Would we be best to go the 14th with the school budget? Because they'll know by then which budget they're going to approach this with, instead of going over both budgets.
Yeah, we're not going to be able to approve anything on the 6th.
No, the 6th will be more of sharing information.
Yeah, sharing information with us.
Right, but are we going to sit there and spend the whole night talking about it? And then, the AOS dissolves, and we just have to do the one? Or are we going to sit there and talk about both budgets and not get one of them? They could present us with whichever budget on the 14th, the day after the election.
Mr. Chairman, if I may. Perhaps I should have a conversation with Eric, as you may recall in years past. Oftentimes, when we're trying to schedule workshops with them, sometimes it conflicts with Bassibro and Waterville. So, let me get ahold of Eric, explain to him our concern, that we'd like to meet with them at least twice, and find out how we could do that in a timeline that's going to give you folks ample time to review their budget and ask for...
And I would just ask that they not be back-to-back, so that we can look over the information, and then if we have questions, they have time to gather the answers, so.
But we want the 6th and the 14th, that would give them time. It was time to look over the stuff before we had the other one, with the two budgets of business.
And the 14th might not give them enough...
Well, Mike, who would give them enough time to react?
Well, they should, chances are, as a chairman, they don't have, but they already have something prepared. Okay, so if this happens, they, they'll give us this, if this happens, they'll give us...
And the only difference in the budget is going to be how we...
Administration.
...administration part of it.
That's all.
Everything else is going to be the same.
That's right.
What we spend in the classrooms should remain the same, if you're regardless of the AOS.
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
Mike, when you have finalized, tentatively finalized the budget, not a budget, but a meeting date, dates with the school board, can you send us an email?
Yes. Yes. And did the council want me to look at the schedule and try to consolidate as well?
I think we can consolidate a couple of them, yeah. I like the department heads being in here individually and spending time with them.
Okay.
Go ahead.
But the idea might be to reserve, reserve some slots, particularly from the middle of March on, depending on a whole group of things. Okay? You know, I would, I would suggest that we all reserve those dates. And then, if we want to consolidate, we might end up with a, with a date that you could or could not use, but at least it'd be available.
And there are other dates in there that we could use, so I...
You know, I'd like to see her try to use a date where we could all be here. Ms. West can't be here on the 5th.
I might get stuck in Mexico.
You might not come back, right? You might not be here on the 7th, either, right?
You didn't tell me that.
Any other...
Any other comments on your schedule? The next item, 87 Benton Avenue. As you know, we've razed the building. And I have had some communications with a representative of the catering business that's right next door. The lot really is, I think, too small to build on. For somebody to meet the setback requirements, it would be a real small structure. So, if the council are okay, I'd like to have a conversation with the catering business to see what level of interest and perhaps what, you know, what they might be willing to pay.
About on the next door neighbor on the other side?
That's, I believe that's an apartment. I can reach out to them as well.
They might need more parking than they want to buy some of that, if possible.
So, I will do that.
Are those two spruce trees going to stay there?
Need firewood?
No, no, I don't need firewood.
I got to talk to Paul, because he was going to have a conversation with CMP. We are having some discussions about the best way to bring those down. But Paul was going to touch base with CMP, so to see if perhaps they might be willing to come in. The only other item is the sale of tax-acquired property. As you can see, we've had four properties. We've had some expense to get those properties to the point where we can sell them, like 87 Benton Avenue, as far as raising the building. So, anyway, our net thus far is $86,035. That's all I have.
Any further questions to the town manager?
Yep. I probably won't be able to answer this one. Cluckin Avenue Hill. We got the poles up. When is CMP going to come in and put their lines on the new poles?
Don't know.
Don't know?
I don't know the answer to that. I know Paul's been communicating with them, certainly about the streetlights. And so, and we agree, CMP would put the new poles in, do the conversion, do utilities, and then, you know, we put the streetlights on, as they stand right now. But as far as the, I could, I could ask Paul and see if he knows when that is, and get back to you if you'd like.
I don't think CMP will give out a date. I don't know if they'll give out a date, CMP will give out a date.
Maybe they can give us a timeframe.
Yeah.
Yeah, we need to know that. Because we only got like three months, four months, we're going to be in spring.
Hopefully.
Yeah, and if then, because you got two other utilities to work out there, which is Spectrum and Fairpoint.
And we all set with the town manager's report. Any further questions?
Proposed climate change for a resolution.
That's a discussion at the end.
Okay, good.
We're going to have a discussion.
Because I see it on your...
She attached it, and we have it listed under discussion. There's no vote tonight, I know, it's just a discussion. All set, move on to reports of committees and commissions, the other reports of department heads, the finance committee report, and the finance report. There's no question, I'll entertain the motion and accept all reports.
Second.
Moved and seconded, any questions? All in favor, please raise your right hand. Oppose, same sign. And we move on. If no one takes ordinance 16 off the table, I'll move on to unfinished business, which is ordinance number 14, 2017, providing for amendment to the Winslow zoning map to rezone the entire lot owned by Gloria Veyou, tax map 16, Lot 34, 55 China Road, from the high-density residential district to the mixed-use district. This is the second reading, what is your pleasure?
I'll move second.
Move again, seconded, open for discussion.
Goodness, Mr. Chairman, I think that the work that the planning board has done, and, you know, the folks who were, you know, proposing, I think it's a logical change that needs debate. I'm a little bit concerned. Ideally, we'd be talking about two or three properties, but I understand that that is a process to go through, and we can go through that process. But certainly, looking at what the use is and what that area is, I think that's logical change.
Any further comments? If not, we're going to roll call vote.
Ray Karen?
Yes.
Ken Fletcher?
Yes.
Jeff West?
Yes.
Patricia West?
Yes.
Ben Twitchell?
Yes.
Jerry Kurian?
Yes.
Steve Russell?
Yes.
Moving on to ordinance number 15, 2017, providing for amendment to Chapter 14, Article 6, 14-61D of the Winslow Town Code titled "General Site and Use Standards" by deleting the strike-through, strike-through language in the attached section. Second reading, what is your pleasure?
I'll move.
It's been moved, is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded, open for discussion.
I got a question.
Go ahead.
That is the same thing that we had tabled. It's the same thing as we had on the table business. You look at that, so which is right?
One is, one is Section D and one is Section F, so there is a slight difference.
Okay, okay.
I'm not...
Yep. Goodness, Mr. Chairman, just a refreshment and recall. And, and I was looking at the paper. That's the one where we remove the restriction of not being able to have an accessory, accessory building before you startage your principal use building.
I believe that's correct, yep.
That's the one that's tabled, right? No.
No.
Okay, that's the one we're going to go... Right, and, and, you know, the logic I heard was, in many cases, people will have a piece of property, they may want to put a garage in or something. And the way our ordinance is written right now, you wouldn't be allowed to do that until you start on your principal structure.
Principal structure first, right. And so, we, that allows that, I agree with that, yep. Is there any further discussion on ordinance 15, 2017? We all set, we'll take a roll call vote.
Jeff West?
Yes.
Patricia West?
Yes.
Jerry Kurian?
Yes.
Ray Karen?
Yes.
Ken Fletcher?
Yes.
Ben Twitchell?
Yes.
Steve Russell?
Yes. Moving on to order 18, 2017.
Mr. Chairman, I'll recluse myself on that one.
Okay. Order number 18, 2017, providing for an order calling for a special election on March 13. Order number eighteen, two thousand seventeen, providing for an order calling for a special election on March thirteenth, two thousand and eighteen. Second reading, is there a motion?
No motion.
Moved?
Second.
Moved and seconded, open for discussion.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, and you're all probably aware of this, um, the election to disband the AOS does not have to occur on the same date in all three communities. So if we wished, we could hold off on that. I'm not suggesting that, but that would, could, would certainly be an option, if you wanted to do that.
And we did split it, if I remember right, Mr. Chairman, uh, from the two different things that were written in last time, right?
This is only for.
Only for the AOS.
This will, yeah. So technically, you don't have to recuse yourself, we're not talking about that.
Yeah, it's just the AOS.
That's the AOS.
We haven't, we haven't decided that until the coordinator's hearing, isn't that what we decided, till the court settle, right?
Right, and, and I take that, here again, I'm trying to remember, but there was a timeline that said that if we were gonna have the AOS election on the thirteenth, we need to know that by at least a certain date, both for public information notification as well as getting ballots. So if we did, wanted to delay it, I think we still have got another month, if I remember correctly. We could not act on this tonight and then take it up in February, which would still give us time to do the meeting if we so desire on the thirteenth. Or we could then decide that we'll have the election at another date, other than the thirteenth, after that.
And plus, we might have more information on the other.
Yes.
We might have to have another ballot.
Right.
So would, would it smart thing to move to table this, you think, like, this is the second reading?
Well, to me, I don't think we wanna try to have two elections if, if we have to have two elections.
Right.
Right, so if we do have time, and, and since we now understand it's not critical that we all vote on the same date for the AOS, we could table it and then still be able to do the thirteenth if we have information. It says that's what we need to do on half the February meeting, so having said all that, I would move that we table that, which is inappropriate, cause I can't speak before we table it.
So it's been moved and seconded to table, order number eighteen, two thousand seventeen, until next month, and we will have more information. Any discussion on?
I thought you had to have thirty days, because of absentee ballot.
That's true.
We take it off the table, I've just really.
February only has twenty-eight.
I can have the ballots ready the next day.
What?
I can have the ballots ready the next day.
Okay, cause we're doing our own ballots.
So, you know, we, we can still, if we take action on the twelfth, we can still comply with all we need to comply with for the thirteenth. Okay?
Is that still thirty days? Is that thirty days still, with the twenty-eight days in February?
Oh, so I don't know.
It won't be thirty days.
It won't be thirty days, it'll be twenty-nine days or twenty-eight.
Yeah.
But that doesn't mean that we can't have the election three, four days after, right, the sixteenth?
We could move it to, uh.
I assume the thirteenth is a Tuesday?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yes.
So we can move it to the twentieth.
Is that necessary to have it on Tuesdays, it just comes?
Yeah, I've got, I've got a question, my understanding, Mr. Chairman, was that all the schools are gonna vote on this, okay, March. Any one school votes on it, it's done.
Right.
No matter what the other towns do. So, which tells me if they all vote on the thirteenth, any, either one of those other town vote to disband, we don't even have to do it.
Well, I think we have to have.
No, I think, well, don't we still have to do it regardless?
Do we get the community to agree to disband it?
We, I think we would want that as a mandate, we would want to hear from them.
It wouldn't mean much, but, okay.
It would be dissolved, you're right, it would be dissolved going the other two, but it would still be good to get input from the community.
True.
And, and it would also be good to have, if we have to have the special election, to have two reasons for people to go to the polls, I think the turnout would be better.
True.
It's possible.
Do we have any timeframe on the court yet?
No.
Okay.
So the motion on the table, is to table, order number eighteen. Is there any further discussion on table? Do we have to have a roll call vote on table? Okay, so, if there's no further discussion, we'll have a roll call vote on table and motion, uh, table and order number eighteen, two thousand seventeen.
Is Jerry voting on this?
He can, because it does not affect him as it, as of this point.
Just the AOS.
Just the AOS.
I didn't know that we had separated that. Not like that in minutes, sorry.
Really?
That's what we did last month, yeah.
You talked about it a lot.
Yeah.
Okay, Ben Twitchell?
Yes.
Patricia West?
Yes.
Jerry Curian?
Yes.
Ray Karen?
Yes.
Jeff West?
No.
Ken Fletcher?
Yes.
Steve Russell?
Yes. I was just looking to see, we've pulled minutes already, so, I wanted to make sure they're correct.
Well, I'm not talking about that till this time.
Okay. Then we will move on to new business, if everybody, who were in chat?
Yeah.
We'll start with resolution number three, two thousand and eighteen. A resolution providing for authorization for the town manager to accept a donation from the Sukph- Sukphorth Family Foundation to benefit the Winslow Fire Department, be it resolved by town council, town Winslow Asphallos. Whereas, Sukphorth Family Foundation has made a donation to the fire department in the amount of one thousand dollars. And whereas, the fire chief would like to have that donation applied to the fire department's protective clothing line item. Now therefore be resolved by town council, town Winslow, the town manager is hereby authorized to accept the donation from the Sukphorth Family Foundation in the amount of one thousand dollars. And be it further resolved that the donation be applied to the fire department's protective clothing line item, which is currently overdrawn.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? We all set? Is that, let me roll call vote, resolution? Okay, all in favor of resolution three, number two thousand and eighteen, please raise your right hand, opposed, same sign. Passing and. Moving on to resolution four, two thousand and eighteen. A resolution providing for the continuance of post-two thousand and eighteen planning process with PERC. Be it resolved by town council, the town Winslow Asphallos. Whereas, the town's long-term waste disposal agreement with the Pernod Scott Energy Recovery Company, PERC, providing for waste disposal will be expiring on March thirty-first, two thousand and eighteen. And whereas, the town has chosen to withdraw from the M R S C, M R C, and has made an arrangement for waste disposal after March thirty-first, two thousand and eighteen. And whereas, the M R C is requesting that withdrawing municipalities sign the attached withdrawal agreement. Now therefore be resolved by town council, town Winslow, the town manager is hereby authorized to sign the attached withdrawal agreement.
So moved.
Moved and seconded.
So, Mr. Chairman, as you, as you know, we're, um, making arrangements post-two thousand and eighteen, uh, for PERC. And, um, the M R C is requesting that, um, municipalities that are getting out of the M R C to sign this agreement. Uh, it has been reviewed by the town attorney and he's, and he's okay with the agreement.
And, and I, goodness, Mr. Chairman, and that's the same agreement that all the withdrawing towns being asked to approve. And so it has gone through not only a town attorney, but I know that there have been legal reviews by the other attorneys in the other towns, so it appears to be okay.
Raymond.
If I might, and, and I'm sure the rest of the council understands that by withdrawing from the M R C, we decided a long time ago, well, I don't know about a long time ago, but a time ago, that we were not gonna become part of the Fiberite, Fiberite, uh, new plant that's going in. So, and so this agreement, the M R C is also, is running that, that facility. So withdrawing from M R C, now we're independent as far as all of our waste at the present time going to, uh, Noradrock landfill.
But, but if in the future, after our, what is it, three-year contract with Noradrock, after that period, if we did wanna go back, we could go back and reach an agreement with Fiberite directly around disposal of municipal solid waste. We would pay more than what we would if we were in the M R C. But that doesn't preclude us from going back in the future and, and reach an agreement with Fiberite if we are so inclined. I think that the other important thing is that as we leave the M R C, we have potentially will receive something in the order of magnitude of six hundred and thirty thousand dollars from three primary accounts. We've already received twenty-six thousand, six hundred and seventy from the debt service fund. We have agreed to the put option with PERC, which is twenty-seven thousand, five ninety. And then, the tip fee stabilization fund, which we won't know for sure what that is until probably May of this year, but that's five sixty-three. So, the town will have quite a bit of money returned to us as we leave the M R C.
And I thought to continue on to municipal waste, cause we've been meeting for quite a while and there's some subjects. Of course, you know, that money would be, would be very useful, cause we, we do have to make a decision on the trash truck and what we're gonna do long-term for municipal waste. And the municipal committee is, is working on some of the, uh, some, all these issues really as we speak. So, uh, it might be advantageous at some point in time to, uh, to, uh, um, kind of explain what the process is, what we've been doing to the council at some point in time. If anybody's interested in seeing where we are and what decisions we, you know, we need to make, uh, what, what is, what do you, you guys, would you guys wanna like to have an update somehow in some type of format?
Yeah, sure.
Yeah, it's been like two years.
The committee will be meeting next week, we'll be looking at RFPs. And, uh, I'm hoping we'll have enough information then to begin formulating a recommendation back to the council. So my, the plan was, is that hopefully, we would be able to do that in, uh, February.
And this committee is a town committee, right?
Yes.
The one, have you ever brought in other communities like Waterville as part of those conversations, since we sort of piggyback with them on garbage disposal in some ways?
Yes, not, not in the last three months, four months. But, but before that, which was really all part of the discussion about leaving the M R, you know, the M R C and all that. So there have been joint meetings with Waterville and quite a few other communities.
It seems like we should form our own M R C in a sense and, and figure out what we're gonna do in the future.
Longer term.
Longer term, right. Any further comments? We all set? And that's a resolution, right, just a short hands. All in favor of resolution five, two thousand and eighteen, please raise your right hand, opposed, same sign, passing and. I'm sorry, that was four, that was resolution four, two thousand and eighteen. Resolution five, two thousand and eighteen is now out.
Um, I make a motion to table it for a month. Mark is sick, he has a flu, so he can't be here.
And it would be nice to.
We need him to be here to kind of recognize him, so, yeah.
So your motion is to table, and we have a second, any discussion on table and?
We could do your conference.
Yeah, we could, we could FaceTime him.
FaceTime him.
All in favor, please raise your right hand, all the same sign, so, resolution five is on to be tabled. And we move on to discussion, and we'll begin the discussion with the climate change resolution that was presented to us by a citizen of Winslow. For our consideration.
Mr. Chairman, I mean, Peter was at a prior meeting, I was hoping to be here. He's not here, we can table it till the next meeting.
Good.
Wow, yeah.
You know, the one thing I will say, Mr. Chairman, I, you know, I took the liberty of putting my thoughts down on this, just not yes or no, but just behind it. Since we all have so much free time, one of the interesting things is, just go on and Google tab and tax, and there's a lot of, this has been tried in British Columbia, Australia, and many places. So it's not like this is the first time, and so if you really wanna get some background, there's a lot of information on the internet and so forth. Because it is a very complicated issue.
So we'll save that for discussion next month then, if that's all right with everybody?
Yes.
And, uh, is there any further discussion, would anybody like to discuss anything else?
If anybody wants to stay up, stay up to look at baby pictures.
You got more baby pictures?
I got a few on baby pictures, yeah.
And the billing committee, I understand, is Wednesday, at high school.
Correct.
Wednesday is six?
Huh?
Wednesday is six at, uh.
High school.
High school, okay.
I won't be able to make that one. I'm out there. Any further?
Make a motion to adjourn?
Don't move. Move to adjourn.